All right, good evening, everybody. I've been informed that we've reached the quorum and I'm opening this meeting of the Rowley Town Meeting for May 6, 2019. Under Section 11 of the Town's General Bylaws, and with your consent, I have designated that the visitors will be seated on this side. All those in favor of visitors, and these visitors are people that are either employed by the town, or not residents of the town, or the fire chief, and the police chief, and the school superintendent. All those in favor of the visitors sitting over here on my left-hand side signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Is there anybody else out there that are visitors? Send them in.
So you're called to order here?
Yes, I did. I did call.
Okay. Quorum, please.
And I have asked Reverend Ireland to please lead us in the invocation. She has to go back for a meeting over at the Congregational Church. You can't hear me? No, that's not good.
Get your mouth closer to the mic.
Good evening. Can you hear that? No?
No. This is not going to work out good today. I'll go close to it.
Where is that?
Oh, no, those are working.
These are working.
I know. Is yours working?
I got this one. There we go. All right. Good evening. I'm recognizing a few faces now. I've been here for a while. I'm Reverend Lee Ireland from the First Congregational Church of Rowley, next door, and I apologize that I cannot stay for this meeting because I have another meeting that was planned at the church, which is an important one. And so I give thanks for the invitation to be here with you tonight. I invite you now to be with us in the spirit of prayer as you go into this important meeting. Gracious and loving God, we give thanks first for that sunshine for this day. What a gift that has been. But we give thanks for the opportunity to gather here at Pine Grove School. We come from the various parts of Rowley. In order to respond to our responsibility as citizens of our community, we give thanks for the opportunity to have the chance to talk. We come with different understandings and from different faith communities, but we come with the knowledge that we are here to do the work for decisions about our town. We pray that you will offer your guiding spirit tonight on all who are here as we go into the meeting where there are ideas that will be shared, opinions that will be shared on the zoning. May it be your spirit that guides those who stand to speak. May respect be offered. May it be the larger vision for the whole town that guides each response so that the decisions that will come will reflect those of the majority and will be for the benefit of this town. We give thanks for the freedoms that we do have. We ask this in Jesus's name, out of my tradition. Amen.
Okay. Now, can you hear me now? Okay, perfect. Thank you, Reverend Ireland.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would somebody from the Board of Selectmen like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag? Or I can do it. Doesn't matter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so, just a couple of quick informational things I'm going to, just in case there is somebody here who's never been to a town meeting. My role here is to run the town meeting. The special, which is in your booklet besides the regular, the special is to finish the balance, the budget for FY19, and the regular meeting is to set the budget for FY20 and any changes of bylaws and zoning changes. That is the purpose of town meeting. And I use the town bylaws and town meeting times, and then if all else fails, we'll see if common sense can prevail. And right now, I do not see any of our state officials here. I have been informed that both of them are going to try and be here, but because of other town meetings going on, they're going to kind of flow in and flow out. So if they do come, I will introduce Senator Tarr and Representative Hill. I want to make sure that everybody here has a copy. There are extra copies outside of the warrant, and there was...
Debbie, was there a page two for the water department?
And there is a change in the numbers on the water department. The total stays the same, but over the different columns, they had to reprint that page, so that page is out there. So the page that's with the water department in the regular budget, the regular town meeting, is got the same final number, but how they got to the numbers has changed. So I want to make sure everybody gets a copy of that, and you have a copy of the warrant.
Does anyone have a copy of that?
Yes. Does everybody have a copy of the warrant?
No, the extra page.
Well, they won't.
No, they won't get it.
Oh, they won't get it.
I'm not... Well, they don't have one, so let me go get one.
Rick? Rick, could you please bring a copy of the change in the water department for Sue?
Just the water page. Just the water page.
Little details like ever.
No, that's okay.
All righty. And this is in the... Let's start with the reading. I will start with the reading of the special town meeting. Sue?
Town of Rowley, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, warrant for the special town meeting, May 6, 2019. To the constables in the Town of Rowley and the County of Essex, greetings.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Madam Moderator, I move to suspend the further reading of the May 6, 2019 special town meeting warrant because present town meeting members have a copy of this warrant.
All those...
Second.
It has been moved in second to suspend the reading of the special town meeting warrant. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Article 1 is in order.
No. That's what we... Somebody needs to make an appointment.
Okay, all right. What is... Okay. Article 2?
Article 2, Madam Moderator. I've moved the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $6,000 from line 167 unemployment of Article 4 of the April 30, 2018 annual town meeting to be added to line 9, selectmen's expense. That better? There we go. Okay. I'll start again. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $6,000 from line 167 unemployment of Article 4 of the April 30, 2018 annual town meeting to be added to line 9, selectmen's expense of Article 4 of the April 30, 2018 annual town meeting to pay for expenses incurred to hold the May 6, 2019 annual town and special town meetings.
Second.
The Finance Committee recommends Article 2.
Are there any questions regarding this article? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article passes.
725.
Okay. I do need to go back. I forgot to... Permission to speak.
Madam Moderator, I move to allow the non-resident town employees and school, local, and state officials to speak if called upon during the May 6, 2019 special town meetings. These individuals will now raise their hands.
Second.
Any questions on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
726.
No, it's seven... Well, I don't know.
Oh, isn't that interesting?
It's 715.
And I reset this at 4 o'clock. I want you to know.
Well, yep. All right. Article 3?
I moved that the town vote...
You gotta... You know, I'm just going to say very quickly, we're all dealing with the new technology of this room, so please bear with us. I've spent a couple of different days here trying to get things all straightened out, make sure everything goes well. I've spent a couple of days here, this past couple of weeks, to make sure everything would run smoothly. So just remember, it is all kind of new, some new technology. These mics are much better than the ones we've had before, so we're still... It's a learning process for us all. So you've got to really speak up into it, even though we've always been told, "Don't swallow the mic." This time, you've got to swallow the mic.
Okay. I move that the town vote to appropriate by transfer the sum of $2,040 from Article 6 of the October 27, 2014 special town meeting, library sprinkler system, and $2,270 from Article 5 of the April 30, 2018 special town meeting, library door opener, for a total of $4,310 to be used to make modifications to the library HVAC system.
It's been seconded? Okay. Somebody did. Okay. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article 3.
Okay. Are there any questions on this article? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article passes. Article 4 is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate by transfer the sum of $52,818 from line 170 of Article 4 Health and Life Insurance and Other Benefits of the April 30, 2018 annual town meeting to be added to line 101 Essex Agricultural Technical School of Article 4 of the April 30, 2018 annual town meeting to cover a shortfall in this account.
Second.
Been moved in second. Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends Article 4.
Okay. Did you want to say anything on it? Just sit down.
Well, the expenses of the Essex Agricultural Technical School were greater than we had appreciated because there were more students went there. It's something the town doesn't have any control over, and this is merely to cover the shortfall.
It's been moved in second, and the explanation has been given. All those in favor of this article signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article passes. Article 5 is in order.
718.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate by transfer the sum of $15,000 from the cemetery sale of lots and graves account, $3,847 from the cemetery perpetual care interest in Article 11 of the May 4, 2015 annual town meeting, Article 14 of the May 2, 2016 annual town meeting, and Article 13 of the May 1, 2017 annual meeting, for a total appropriation of $18,847 to be used by the cemetery commissioners for the purpose of replacing and extending water lines within the cemetery.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends Article 5.
Do you want to explain anything?
No, I was just... This is just transferring accounts that the cemetery has from various accounts, and we want to extend and replace water lines at the cemetery.
Okay. It's been moved in second and recommended by the Finance Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article passes. Article 6 is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate by transfer the sum of $5,000 from line 64, police chief salary and other earnings of Article 4 of April 30, 2018 annual town meeting to be added to line 66, police expenses of Article 4 of the April 30, 2018 annual town meeting.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends Article 6.
Joe, do you want to... Just leave it as is? Okay. All right. Are there any questions? All those in favor of Article 6 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 6 passes. Article 7 is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate by transfer the sum of $136,583 from free cash to be expended by the following departments as listed below for the purpose of undertaking the following capital purchases and improvements. One, $24,200 for technology for the following: purchasing and installing computers, software programs, and other related peripherals, and other technology upgrades for the following departments: treasurer-collector, information services, IS, town hall in the annex, council on aging, library, and police departments. Two, $50,541 for the purchase of departmental equipment as follows: mobile data terminal and portable radios for the fire department, voting machines for the town clerk, portable radios and tasers for the police department, a finished mower deck for the highway department. Three, $15,992 for facility upgrades as follows: repair of the town of the annex roof, pipe replacement in the annex basement, replacement of town hall doors, and repairs to town hall exterior. And four, $45,850 for the purchase of a three-quarter ton plow truck for the highway department.
Second.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 7.
Very briefly, this is the standard article we have every year. Of all the years, we end up borrowing on a five-year loan to purchase the stuff. This year, we have enough money in the free cash to purchase the stuff outright, which saves money for the town in the long run.
Are there any questions on this article? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 7 passes. Article 8 is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town appropriate $49,640 from the unexpended proceeds of the serial notes of the town dated July 28, 2017, which were issued for the purchase and installation of a new heating and ventilation system for the town hall auditorium authorized under the vote of the town passed at the May 1, 2017 annual town meeting, Article 23, Item 2, which project is now complete and for which no further liability remains to pay the cost of renovating and repairing the town hall annex, town hall and annex, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends Article 8.
Basically, this article would repurpose money that's left over from fixing the heating and ventilation system upstairs on the town hall so that we can use that money to make additional repairs to the town hall and to the annex building.
Are there any questions? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article 8 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 8 passes. Article 9 is in order.
723.
Madam Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer and appropriate from free cash the sum of $175,000 for the purchase of a six-wheel dump truck with plow and spreader for the highway department.
Second.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends Article 9.
As you can see in the warrant, this is to replace a 1998 International, which has seen its day. It's pretty rusted out. It's served the town well, but it's got to go.
Are there any questions regarding this? All those in favor of Article 9 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 9 passes. Article 10 is in order.
724.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate by transfer the sum of $100,000 from free cash to be used by the tree warden for public shade tree cutting and maintenance.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends Article 10.
Brief explanation: Last year, we appropriated $50,000 to cut down... We all can see the variety of huge oak trees that were killed off in the last couple of years by drought and by the worms.
Gypsy.
Gypsy moth worms. We did Olive Havel Street and a couple other pots of other streets, $100,000. Hopefully, we'll get most of the rest of the trees throughout the town on town roads. These are for only trees next to the road and the town roads, and not for private, any private cutting. But it's badly needed. It's a public safety issue if those trees come down, where they've been dead for a couple of years now. They could go through someone's windshield or cause a...
Yep.
They could go... If we don't cut these down, these trees overhang all our roads. They are a public safety danger if a tree comes down through a windshield or passing pedestrians, so we really need to get these cut down ASAP.
Are there any questions regarding Article 10? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 10 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 10 passes. Article 11 is in order.
725.
Madam Moderator, I move the town appropriate $200,000 from the unexpended proceeds of the bonds of the town dated July 26, 2018, which were issued for constructing in addition to the police station and constructing a new fire station authorized under the vote of the town passed at May 2, 2016 annual town meeting, Article 19, which project is now complete and for which no further liability remains to pay the cost of repairing, replacing, and constructing various major systems and building components at the Pine Grove Elementary School, which project was authorized under the vote of the town passed at the May 1, 2017 annual town meeting, Article 20, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, provided that the amount authorized to be borrowed for such product be reduced by a like amount as permitted by Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws.
Second.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends Article 11.
Joe, do you want to...
These funds will be repurposed to... And used to reduce the Pine Grove School building borrowing amount, and I would like to again point out that the funds come from a completed project, the police and fire station.
Okay. Any questions regarding this? All those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 11 passes. Article 12 is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate by transfer the sum of $7,000 from free cash to pay for a construction cost estimate to build a new recycling center. By way of explanation, we've identified...
Second.
Sorry, second.
You want to hit the second before you go into the...
Second.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends Article 12.
Okay. Now you can.
Thank you. We've identified a town-owned parcel of land at 516 Newburyport Turnpike as a possible site for a new recycling center, and this would... This money would provide for a construction cost estimate, which would include survey work, site plan design, and an estimate of the cost to build the center secured with a fence and gate. So this would not pay for the actual construction of the center. If the selectmen decide to proceed with the construction of the center, we'd have to return to town meeting and ask for additional funds.
Are there any questions regarding this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of this article signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous?
729.
Article 12 passes, and Article 13 is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate by transfer the sum of $6,000 from free cash to pay the cost to conducting a town employee pay equity and gender analysis study.
Second.
Finance Committee recommends Article 13.
Just a brief explanation under the recently passed state law, we have... We are required by state law to examine all of our positions in town, all the town employees, and make sure that we are paying our male and female employees an equal rate of pay. So this is the cost to have someone come in and do this study.
Any questions regarding this article? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor... What is this? It's Article 13, right? All those in favor of Article 13 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 13 passes. Article 14 is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town to vote to appropriate by transfer the sum of $20,000 from free cash to be used to pay for compliance with the new occupational health and safety requirements under Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 149, Section 612.
Second.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends Article 14.
As everyone who's in the private sector knows, they come under the OSHA regulations, now state and municipal... Now state and municipal come under OSHA regulations and standards, so this... Bring the town up to that.
Are there any questions on Article 14? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 14 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? If motion carries, Article 15 is in order.
731.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate by transfer the sum of $15,000 from free cash to pay for the cost of creating and hosting a new town website.
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends Article 15.
These funds will be used for creating and hosting a new, more user-friendly website.
Are you finished? Okay. Are there any questions regarding Article 15? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
732.
Article 15 passes. Article 16 is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate by transfer from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund the sum of $70,000 for an upgrade of recording and broadcasting equipment at town hall from standard definition SD to high definition HD.
Second.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 16.
Very briefly, this would approve... Improve the quality of Rowley community media recordings by switching from standard definition to high definition.
Are there any questions regarding this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 16 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 16 passes. Article 17 is in order.
I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following...
Swallow the mic.
Swallow the mic. Hey, is that better? There we go. I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following: $183,950 from Article 24 Water Treatment Plant dehumidification of May 2, 2016 special town meeting, and $6,050 from Article 10 Water Treatment Plant clearing...
from Article ten Water Treatment Plant Cleaning Clearwell and Basins of May first, two thousand and seventeen annual town meeting for a total appropriation of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars to be used for the purpose of replacing valves at the Prospect Hill Storage Tank.
It's been moved in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article seventeen.
Okay. Mark.
Last year we voted to do the engineering on this. It's, that the bottom of Prospect Hill between the lines from the old tank and the new tank, there's nobody that knows anything about what any different valve works, and to shut the water off to the town, it needs to be completely redone to be useful.
Are there any, are there any questions regarding this article? Excuse me. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article seventeen passes. Article eighteen is in order.
Seven thirty-four.
I move the town vote to appropriate the transfer of the sum of seven thousand one hundred and fifty from Article twenty-five Repair Water Tank of the May second, two thousand and sixteen special town meeting to be used for the inspection and cleaning of the Prospect Hill Storage Tank.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article eighteen.
That's just leftover funds from the repairs, moving it in so that the tank can be cleaned.
Are there any questions regarding Article eighteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article eighteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article eighteen passes. Article nineteen is in order.
Seven thirty-four.
I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following sums: twelve thousand from Article ten Water Treatment Plant Access Road of the May second, two thousand and sixteen annual town meeting; eleven thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars from Article twenty-five Water Tank Repair of May second, two thousand and sixteen special town meeting; and forty-six thousand eighty-five dollars from Article fifteen Sanitary Survey of November fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen special town meeting, for a total appropriation of seventy thousand dollars to replace distribution main valves in multiple locations in town.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee approves or recommends Article nineteen.
Okay. Mark.
We have many valves in town that are getting very old, and they need to be replaced. That's what we're doing.
Are there any questions regarding this article? All those in favor of Article nineteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article nineteen passes. Article twenty is in order.
Seven thirty-seven.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund this year, two thousand and nineteen annual revenues, the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, debt service, community preservation projects, and other expenses. With each item be considered a separate appropriation as follows: reserve, creation and support of affordable housing; original appropriation, twenty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and three cents; additional allocation, seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and seven cents; total allocation, twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and ten cents; reserve, creation and support of historical preservation; additional allocation, seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents; appropriation, administration; original appropriations, twenty-five thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and thirty-six cents; additional allocation, three thousand nine hundred and six dollars and four cents; total allocation, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article twenty.
Basically, this article would set aside monies from our Community Preservation Fund to the areas of affordable housing and historic, preservation of historic resources, which we are required to do by state law. Essentially, the state requires towns that have a CPC fund to set aside ten percent of the fund for those purposes. So that's what this article would do. It would also provide money for the administrative expenses of the fund.
Are there any questions regarding this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article twenty passes, and Article twenty-one is in order.
Seven thirty-nine.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, to transfer and appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund Community Housing Reserve Account and/or Community Preservation Unreserved Account the sum of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to be used by the Rowley Housing Authority to fund the renovation and replacement of two hundred and twelve windows and eight roofs located at the senior housing on Plantation Drive and shown on Assessors Map, map twenty-four, lot thirty.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-one.
Joe, do you want to?
Yes. The Community Preservation has approved this, committee has approved this article. The Rowley Senior Housing was constructed in nineteen seventy-one and represents most of the town of Rowley affordable housing. As a current older development, replacement of the windows and roofs are required to preserve the buildings for current and future occupants.
Are there any, are there any questions regarding Article twenty-one? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article twenty-one passes. Article twenty-two is in order.
Seven forty.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, to transfer and appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund Historic Resources Reserve and/or the Community Preservation Unreserved Account the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be used by the town clerk for costs associated with preservation, restoration, digitalization, and deacidification of town vital records.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-two.
Very briefly, this article would enable the town clerk to continue her efforts to preserve vital town records. These records includes records of births, deaths, marriage, property ownership, polls, valuation, and rebellion records. Goes back as late as sixteen eighty-nine in some cases.
Are there any questions regarding this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article twenty-two passes. Article twenty-three is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town to vote and authorize the Board of Selectmen pursuant to General Law forty, Section three and four, to enter into a lease for certain, certain real estate property of the town of Smith Lane off Havel Street, identified as parcel two dash two on Assessors Map thirteen. For such lease is to be for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, maintaining a telecommunications facility thereon.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-three.
Briefly, this is the, the lease agreement for this piece of property is up in October of two thousand and twenty, so we need to redo the lease. Rental payments are approximately a little over thirty thousand dollars on this piece of property.
Are there any questions regarding this article? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article twenty-three passes. Article twenty-four is in order.
Seven forty-three.
Madam Moderator, I move the town pursuant to General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifteen A, vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to transfer the care, custody, and control of a parcel of municipal land located on Saunders Lane, shown on the Rowley Assessors Map as map seventeen, parcel thirty-six, lot twenty-six, containing approximately twenty-nine thousand and ninety-one square feet, and acquired by the town by a tax taking recorded at book thirty-two oh eight, page five-five-seven of the Essex South Registry of Deeds from the Board of Selectmen to the Rowley Conservation Commission for conservation purposes as authorized by General Law, Chapter forty, Section eight C. As it may from time to time be amended and subject to the purposes and protections of Article ninety-seven of the Amendments to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, this municipal parcel is shown as parcel L on a plan entitled Plan of Land Rowley, Massachusetts, Essex County, prepared for Rowley Pines Trust, Scale One, Inch Equals Forty Feet, Date September eighteen nineteen ninety-seven, prepared by Meridian Engineering, Ink Sheet One of One, recorded with said deeds at Plan Book Three Twenty, Plan Fifty-seven.
Second.
The Finance Committee does not have to make a recommendation on this. You can go ahead with the next explanation.
Very briefly, this article will transfer a parcel to the care and protection of the Conservation Commission to be used for conservation purposes. It was a parcel that was shown on the Saunders Lane subdivision plan, which happened quite some time ago. It was recently, it's not a buildable lot, but it was shown on that plan as being intended for conservation purposes. The town recently acquired this particular parcel as a tax title foreclosure, and so this article would transfer that to the Conservation Commission, so it could be preserved as conservation land.
Okay, thank you. I need to inform you that this is, has to be a two-thirds vote for it to pass, not just a unanimous. I'm going to call, since there are no, first of all, are there any questions regarding this? Sorry. Yes, come forward and please state your name and your address, and then your question. No, right to the mic. We need for the records who's asking what.
My name is Victoria McKenna. I live on eleven Pearly Ave, and I just was wondering, do we pay taxes on conservation land?
Do we pay taxes?
Does Rowley pay taxes on conservation land?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, like I says, it is a two-thirds vote. I'm going to see if we can get a unanimous vote. If not, then we will have to count. All those in favor of Article twenty-four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-four passes. Article twenty-five is in order.
Seven forty-six.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the cemetery bylaw of the general bylaws of the town of Rowley by deleting Section seven, fifteen, and sixteen in their entirety, and replacing these sections with new Section seven, fifteen, and sixteen as printed in Article twenty-five on pages six and seven of the May sixth, two thousand and nineteen special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Okay, there is no recommendation needed from the Finance Committee.
Yeah, basically what we're doing here is the town, the fees that are in this town meeting bylaw have to be changed at a town meeting. In the future, we'd like to be able to make it so the Cemetery Commissioner at a public meeting, posted public meeting, can accept new fees if desired. And just as a point of information, being a Cemetery Commissioner-
It's the only time I can give a notice.
And just as a note of interest here, we're changing the bylaw. However, the Cemetery Commission has no intent at this time or in the near future that I know of to increase these fees. It's just a matter of making it easier, a bookkeeping thing for the future, and to require, not require a bylaw change to change fees.
Are there any questions regarding Article twenty-five? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article twenty-five passes. Article twenty-six is in order.
Seven forty-eight.
I move that the town vote to amend the wetlands protection bylaw as set forth in Article twenty-six on pages seven and eight of the May sixth, two thousand and nineteen special town meeting warrant, except in Section eleven A, the words, quote, "and public hearing," end quote, be deleted.
There's no recommendation here from the Finance Committee. Do you have an explanation?
So basically, similar to what Selectman Peterson-
Right into the mic.
Similar to what Selectman Peterson has just explained, this would have a similar effect, moving the fee structure out of the bylaw into the regulations, allowing the Conservation Commission to set that fee in a more equitable manner.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding this change? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article-
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, let's call for it again, just so that it's, for the records, it's fine. Anybody, any, all those in favor of Article twenty-six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article twenty-six passes. Article twenty-seven is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town to vote to amend the Rowley Shellfish bylaw of the general bylaws of the town of Rowley under Section seven, violations and fines by adding the word shown in bold underline and deleting the word shown in strike-through as printed in Article twenty-seven on page eight of the May sixteen, May sixth, two thousand and nineteen special town meeting warrant.
Second? It's not a requirement by the Finance Committee. Would you, Paul, would you give a explanation?
So the explanation is, we're attempting, similar to the two previous articles, to move fines and regulations into the purview of the Shellfish Commission, so that it can be done more freely than it is presently, and it's for people that are violating shellfish violations, mostly from the town of Ipswich and Newbury.
Are there any questions regarding this? All righty, all those in favor of Article twenty-seven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article twenty-five, twenty-seven passes.
Seven fifty-one.
Article twenty-eight is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the general bylaws by deleting in its entirety the house-to-house salesman bylaw and replacing it with solicitor and canvasser bylaw as printed in Article twenty-eight on pages eight, nine, ten, and eleven of the May sixth, two thousand and nineteen special town meeting warrant.
Second.
And there is no requirement for the Finance Committee. Joe, do you have maybe a brief explanation of this? Several pages, so.
The passage of this bylaw replaces the house-to-house salesman bylaw, which was adopted in nineteen seventy-two.
Are there any questions regarding this? I know it's several pages in your warrant, and I hope everybody has had a chance to read it. All right? No questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article passes.
Seven fifty-three.
And we're now to Article twenty-nine. Now, as a point of information, Article twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one all have to have a two-thirds vote. I will allow a reasonable amount of time, my time is usually five minutes, for somebody to present and even talk on the opposite side. I'm not going to allow that- I am not going to allow that it becomes a tit-for-tat on questions. If a question has been asked and answered, I'm going to- If a question has been asked and answered, I'm going to ask you to sit down. I understand that these three articles are going to be very much in tune, but my normal time that I've given people when we've had controversial articles has been five minutes. I do not want to set my timer on my phone, but if I do, I will. And another thing with the new technology, the screen for the overhead, the pictures have been over here for people to view, but the screen for the overhead comes down and is now in the front and no longer on the back wall. So, if anybody from the stage, meaning the selectmen, wants to step down, they can stand over here to the side till we go through and go through the whole process. All right? So, if there's anything else that comes up, I feel that we are covering this in a very civil manner.
Down there. If that's the wrong one, the article, he has to want his desk off, and he will replay it right now.
That's the wrong one.
Please, you have to break it. We're new with all the technology.
Shall we?
Go ahead.
Okay, good.
Move the motion.
Sure. Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Rowley zoning map, the map, by incorporating the boundary depicted on the map exhibited entitled Proposed Area for Retail Village Overlay District, prepared by the Town of Rowley Planning Staff dated January 30, 2019, and shown on Page 14 of the May 6, 2019 special meeting warrant, and to amend the Rowley Protective Zoning Bylaw, the bylaw, by adding the Retail Village Overlay District, the RVOD, to the list of existing overlay districts specified under Section 3.1, Establishment of Districts of the bylaw, and B, by adding a new Section 4.15, Rowley Village Overlay District, the RVOD, under Section 4, Use Regulations of the bylaw, as printed in Article 29 on Pages 11, 12, and 13 of the May 6, 2019 special meeting warrant. So, as an explanation...
You have a second on that?
Thanks. I still think we're looking at the... Okay, we're back to looking at the right map. So, sure.
Two seconds, this motion, please. Long we don't do this, we're moving along, and on one night.
So, thank you. So, what we're trying to do here is create an overlay district, so it doesn't change the underlying district, which is the outlying district where we generally allow agricultural and residential uses. This would create a district where we would allow retail use, provided it meets very specific requirements, including, well, this is development along Haverhill Street as we get closer to 95. It would require that the buildings be close to Haverhill Street, and we're attempting to get the parking to go in the rear of the building so that we don't have strip malls lining the corridor into town. It also has restrictions on the architectural characteristics of the development, so that we're trying to create a retail village, which is a little more aesthetically pleasing than what you'd find in a typical strip mall that otherwise would be considered in this type of a district. And in addition to some of these characteristics, we're also authorizing the developers to, provided they provide either affordable housing components, they may allow retail components on the second and third stories of whatever projects they may propose. So, generally, that's what we're attempting to do. It's about 34 acres, it's on both sides of Weathers, pardon me, of Haverhill Street, including what's now ABZ Storage, as well as Muddy Creek out to 95.
Other?
Any questions about Annis?
Would you ask that?
Okay.
Other?
Sir, in the back?
Please.
If you don't mind, yeah. Please.
Rupert Annis, 544, 545, Newbury, 1, Turnpike. I read through these regulations, and I'm just curious, looking at the shape of the lots, how you anticipate a building to be set back a maximum of 50 feet and a minimum of 30 feet, and allow for some parking? Because usually when somebody comes to drive up to a business, the first thing they look for is, do I have a place to park? And these, when I look at the lots, I'm looking at, they all look like they're going to have to be 90 degrees to 133, and what you're trying to do, it sounds like a good idea, but I'm just wondering how you actually implement it with the regulations that you have here for the parking.
Sure. Thanks for the question. Firstly, we're not proposing any specific project. We're going to leave it up to the landowners and developers to propose that project. They'd have to propose that project within the confines of the ordinance that we're allowing, and we are trying to encourage a more aesthetic retail use of this property, and we think that this would help achieve that. We're certainly, you know, aware that parking is going to be important of any retail establishment, but we're trying to encourage the use of parking in the rear of these buildings so that we can keep the facades, again, more aesthetic, on what really is the gateway into town. Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, we have, right here.
Yes, that's the law. I was like seven months pregnant the first time I had to get up in front of paper and say something. Okay, there you go.
Oh, Lord. My name is Louise Demella. I live on, my name is Louise Demella, and I live at Leslie Road. I'm just wondering what's going to happen? You're talking about it being part of the property that's already taken by the storage area and Muddy Creek. What is going to happen to those businesses that already exist? Oh, good.
So, this doesn't change ownership of the property in any way. The owners of these properties can decide what they want to do with it. This just gives them different options in that district. Any other questions?
Hey, you want my job?
Okay. This is Article 29. Seeing no more questions, I'm going to call for a unanimous vote. If not, we'll have to count.
Another question?
Okay, come forward.
Barbara Trello, 916. Okay. Barbara Trello, 916 Haverhill Street. The only thing I got to say about this is the traffic down here is already horrendous, and this is going to make it worse. Every morning, I walk on a treadmill, and I make two five-minute traffic counts, and in five minutes, the traffic can be any place from 47 cars in five minutes to 152 cars in five minutes. So, you take it from there.
Thank you. So, again, this only authorizes, or would allow, an owner developer to propose a project. Customarily, when we consider these type of projects, we always require the applicant to provide a traffic study, so we would certainly be looking at traffic counts and traffic safety. So, this doesn't authorize any specific use, it just allows them to propose a specific use, and we would be considering those things. Did I see another hand? I think it does.
All right, come forward, please. I just heard somebody's phone. Please silence them. I thought I wouldn't have to say that.
Hello, Eric Undrum, 26 Saunders Lane. I'm wondering if you could please identify, when you say "we," who you're talking about or who you're representing?
Sure. So, I represent the planning board. When I say "we," I'm speaking for the town. My only interest is that as a citizen here in town, so I suppose I represent all of us.
Seeing no more questions on this article? As I says, I'll look for a unanimous vote. If not, being a two-thirds, we will have to count. All those in favor of Article 29 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All opposed.
Okay. I can, I will tell you by the number, what I heard, I can call it as a unanimous vote. We can do one of two things. I can ask for it again, or we will count.
You can't call that unanimous.
All right, we'll count.
You can't call that unanimous. You can't. No, you can't. There's too many.
Can I have the counters, please?
Once we finish the paper ballots being put into the bucket, we will move on to the next article while they are counting.
Debbie.
Do you have a voting bucket?
Oh, no, no, no. Whatever your decision is, it's...
She'll tell us which grade. She'll tell us which group, those first.
Yeah, no, she's got to count for Sue.
Yes, you do. Some of these issues, like some of the stuff, surprises a lot of them, you know, on CD's, it's a bit divisive. Let you vote privately, and whatever the results are, they do the count. That's it.
Yeah.
It's a small, no trouble, really.
Any one of them will give two. Two on each side.
And you have people who...
I'll make sure that everybody has a ballot.
You felt different than they did on a certain issue, and that's...
All right, once everybody has a ballot, you're going to rip it in half. Sue has the box here for your vote. The one that you are not using will go in the bucket here and returned to your seat. And we'll start as soon as I know that everybody in the room has... Yep. Does anybody need a ballot?
I think so. Starting at the beginning of this.
Yes, yes, yes.
Who needs one?
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, but it was a few, right?
So, this is, yeah, the 31. This one here is just for the, on 133. So, this is to see if we amend the town, so, okay.
Okay, this is the first, I assume, of more than one. Everybody has a ballot? Rip in half? The vote that you want to count will go in the bucket that the town clerk is holding. The one that you are not voting will go in this bucket. Once everybody has voted, I'll, we'll call you up, one side at a time. It'll be the easiest way than too much confusion of people going up and down the aisles. We will move on while the counters come up with the answer. We will move on to the next article so that we keep this meeting moving. Okay? Does everybody understand how this works? All right, we'll start over here with this side, please. Come forward.
Make sure to put up...
Yes, I told them they had it outside the door.
Okay? They, they're fine. No, outside of, 150, but what I do is, we've always had them outside the door. Yeah, no, yeah, yeah. Right, but it's, that's the way, that's the way it's always been, outside.
It doesn't say they're going to. Give them an option if they want it.
That's why it's called...
Did you see the... Did you hear a pop? District, they want to make, Saunders Lane, they want to make it...
Well, we don't want you to stay that long.
How am I doing, Peter?
Is this really jing-jing?
Yes, it's, something cut out, moving reservation. I don't know. I was counting across, I get nine seats, and it's pretty full.
Madam Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Mind putting my vote in, but I can't get out?
It's too late. He can't get hurt now. I feel he's telling.
Yeah. Maybe that will make you more feel, or make you feel, it could make it a 711.
Yeah, make it a Starbucks.
Yeah, there you go.
It looks like the scene, mobile, huh?
Yeah. Oh, I know, yeah.
Okay, this side?
Yes, I will.
She's got to remember to call us.
No, we can do that.
Wait till some of these people go.
Yep. I need to scan.
Yes, I guess, I will. But they won't, they won't...
Three nothing. They want three nothing in the next.
Mary.
Yeah, we got that.
They don't, they, you got, you got, you got serious stripes inside, okay, yes, we did, we're fine, because that's, yeah.
Yeah? You don't be needing to catch that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, the new technology.
Does everybody understand how this works? Alright, we'll start over here with this side, please, come forward. Yes, I told them they had it outside the door. Okay? They, they're fine. No, outside of... One hundred and fifteen, but what I do is, we've always had them outside the door.
I just never saw it.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah.
I was thinking this one.
Right, but it's, that's the way, that's the way it's always been, outside, outside.
It doesn't say they're going to. Gives them an option if they want it.
That's why it's called...
I guess it just, it just includes, if you think you trust the town.
Did you see the... Did you hear a pop? Do you have a district they want to make, sign this name, they want to make a conversion?
Well, we don't want you to stay that long.
How am I doing, Dee?
Is this really Jing Jinger?
Yes, it's, something cut out, maybe reservation. There's a gullible hundred people here. I was counting across, you get nine seats at the middle of the rows.
Yeah.
So, and it's pretty full.
Madam Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Do you mind putting my vote in, but I can't get out?
It's too late, he can't get hurt now. I feel he's telling me.
Yeah. Maybe that will make you more feel, or make you think in person, it could make it a seven-eleven.
Yeah, make it a Starbucks.
Yeah, do you call?
I would like to see, mobile, huh?
Where?
Oh, I know, yeah.
Okay, this side. Yes, I will.
She's got to read numbers and call us.
Thank you.
Wait till some of these people go.
Yes, I guess, I will, but they won't, they won't...
Mary.
You got, you got, we got serious stripes inside, okay, yes, we did, we're fine. Because that's, yeah, we did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, it's a new technology. Okay, has everybody voted? Alright, folks, while they're counting these, we're going to move on to Article 29. So 29 is in order. Okay, and everybody has voted? Alrighty, thank you. Alright, while they're counting, Article 30 is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move with the town vote to amend the zoning district map of the town of Rowley by transferring from the Outlying District to the Business Light Industrial Zoning District. The premises depicted on the plan exhibited entitled "Map Depicting Area Along Newburyport, Turnpike Between Central Street and Weathersfield Street: The Rezone From Outlying District To Business Light Industrial Zoning," at the 2009 Spring Town Meeting, which are, which plans are on file with the Planning Board, and which are printed on pages fifteen and sixteen of the May 6, 2019 Special Town Meeting warrant, and which depict the areas being rezoned consisting of properties listed in Article 30 on pages fourteen and fifteen of the May 6 Special Town Meeting warrant. The total area being so rezoned containing approximately ninety-three point three-two acres. Can I get a second? Okay, so as an explanation, what the town here is proposing is that we transfer what I believe is thirty, pardon me, twenty-three lots along Route 1 that are currently zoned in the Outlying Zoning District, which again primarily allows for retail and agricultural uses, to redistrict this as Business Light Industrial. A lot of the businesses out there are pre-existing non-conforming uses. This would bring those sites under the purview of the zoning board, so if there were any change in use, we would consider different uses than are already being conducted at those sites. It would allow the review of those sites to make the properties more conducive to what we think is a good planning in the town. And part of the reason we're doing this is to encourage more commercial growth in the town. And when we tried to identify locations in town where we'd want to do these type of things, well, there really aren't that many areas where we'd want to see commercial growth. This Route 1 corridor has traditionally been used up and down from Boston all the way north to Newburyport for residential, pardon me, for commercial use. And for that reason, it seemed like this was an obvious place to look at. So again, we're not opening this up for random development, but we are restricting it to Business Light Industrial, which is, in fact, the district that exists south of Weathersfield, down to the Retail District. So we're just asking that the town consider extending that Business Light Industrial District further north. Any questions?
Alright, if there's going to be, I assume there'll be plenty of questions on the next two articles. Stand over here on my right-hand side. Step up to the mic, state your name and your address, and if you have a question, it'll try to be answered. If you have a statement, as I says, I would like you to please to keep it at least to five minutes and no longer. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bambi Whitmore, on Glen St., sixty-one Glen Street, Rowley. I'm asking you to please vote no on the change in zoning from Outlying District to Business Light Industrial for Articles 30 and 31. The argument is that more large business buildings, such as those that have been built between Route 133 and Weathersfield, are great for a tax base. There will be no, but there will be no additional children on those lots to populate our schools. These businesses are taxed at the same rate as homeowners are taxed. They're not taxed on corporate income, sales, just property tax. The tax they contribute to this town is minimal in comparison to the tax paid by household property owners. Residential taxes paid to the town are about thirteen point seven million dollars. Commercial industrial taxes paid are about one point eight million. Businesses are huge consumers of energy. They create areas of crime requiring lots of lighting. Light pollution kills the night sky. There will be a large increase in traffic. It creates more paved areas. Business Light Industrial has no requirement regarding lot area or frontage. Residential requires sixty thousand square feet and one hundred fifty frontage. VLI allows fifty percent lot coverage. Many, many units could be jammed in here as lots are divided. We do not want this kind of traffic here, and there are already a large number of vacancies in commercial buildings. The number of children per household has been decreasing for years. The high cost in education is due in large part to the cost of special education, and because the state's contribution has been minimal since huge cutbacks in the late years. We need to find solutions to the high costs of educating our children, but it should not be to the long-term irreversible detriment to our community. It is short-sighted to say, let's build all these hulking commercial buildings that will forever destroy the ambiance of this area, thinking that it will take care of our school cost woes. People have championed more commercial buildings, say it can be beautiful at the Hilltop Steakhouse area in Sogus. I moved to Rowley thirty years ago, not this August. I came here because it was a rural community with the charm of roots back to the sixteen hundreds. We need to maintain that charm, keep the rural and quaint character. On the Planning Board Chairman was just saying that we should worry about the ambiance on Route 95. What about the ambiance on Route 1? Okay, I, I'm almost done. The zoning change is before us because one property owner on... The zoning change is before us because one property owner on this stretch of road wanted to build a larger industrial. Do we really want to change our zoning every three years because of the whim of a current property owner? It is truly short-sighted. Before we allow any more industrial buildings or zoning changes, we need to look at ways to make our development green. We need to look at building codes. This is a time to pause and think about what changes are going to make this a sustainable community that celebrates our history from the founding families of Rowley to preserve the character of our historic town. Let's not make a Route 1 rally a copy of Route 1 Sogus. Let's put a stop to this creeping zoning change mentality here and now. Please, please vote no on Articles 30 and 31.
We're just trying to figure out what the static is coming from, so just give us a minute, please. Testing. Shut it off, please. It's the speaker, it's the speaker, but, but... Yeah, alright. Like I said, it's all new equipment and we're still learning with it. Alright, one of these guys.
My name is Catherine Shatton. I live at 316 Weathersfield St., perhaps instead of trying to rezone land for commercial use, we first address the alarming reason the town needs to rezone the land in the first place? Taxes! Right. So we have multiple zoning changes up for a vote, and more like, more likely to come as Rowley addresses its need for revenue sources. Voting on zoning changes without a current town master plan is like building a house without a blueprint. We are literally voting on the, voting to change the town without a plan. The last master plan was delivered in June of 2003, with resident forums held in January 2001 and January 2002. Where were you in 2001? Were the issues you were faced with the same as the ones you're facing today? Who foresaw legal recreational marijuana as an issue Rowley would need to deal with in 2019 back in 2001? The town faces new challenges and it's time for a new master plan. Without halting all development, can the town limit zoning changes until an assessment and a plan can be put together, perhaps including the 2020 census data that we will be getting after the 2020 census? Oh, wow! Without information, we can't make an educated choice.
I'm Bernie Cullen, 283 Weathersfield St., and I oppose this motion, and would like first to make a few points in terms of contrasting the approach of what I see this particular article to the article we just heard about, the Retail Overlay District, which seemed to me to be done systematically, carefully, and with consideration for what the town can actually gain from that particular change. This one appears to be haphazard, essentially with, chaotic is one way of describing it. If you look at those, some of you receive maps outside, which we put together to basically show and explain what the actual article covered. And it covers two distinct areas, above north of Weathersfield St. and south of Weathersfield St., which prompts the question of why are four units, four pieces of property, south of Weathersfield St. put into this particular article? It makes no sense. So then the question is, I agree that the town needs more sources of funding, but when you actually take a look at the properties that are being covered by this article, most of them are actually residential properties. There are actually only five businesses. Those five businesses generate about forty-seven hundred dollars each, so less than twenty-five thousand dollars comes to the tax base from those existing five businesses. The, there are thirteen residences, fifteen residences. They generate three times that amount of revenue. So that leaves seven open plots. Those open plots are essentially problematic from a development point of view, because many of the smaller ones especially are on wetlands. So development there is problematic. If you just assume that you can put seven businesses on those properties and you, and you essentially generate the same tax revenue from the existing properties, you're talking about a grand total of about thirty thousand dollars. But you've got to subtract from that thirty thousand dollars, twelve thousand five hundred, which is already being paid into the town for the taxes on the land. So what we're looking at here is a minimal change for a considerable disruption, and as the previous speakers pointed out, a kind of a dramatic change in the ambience for that part of, that part of Rowley. And it will forever change Rowley, because once you've moved towards Salisbury and Seabrook, you don't come back. So it's now is our opportunity to stop this creep, as people described it, and establish a more rigorous way of approaching the planning that really considers what it's going to do for the town as a whole, rather than simply how many, whether you're going to add twenty thousand dollars to the tax rolls. So I want to just emphasize one thing that I struck me from the previous presentation on the Overlay District, and that was aesthetically pleasing. Well, if you, if you move to Business Light Industrial, given the configuration of these plots, there's nothing that you're going to be able to do that's going to be aesthetically pleasing. And I therefore ask you to definitively turn this option down. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Janet Wallace, 294 Weathersfield St. We've lived here for going on forty years at this point, and I'd like to speak in opposition to Article 31 for the following reasons.
Article thirty.
Uh, thirty, for Article thirty. The parcel is part of a very dangerous intersection, which continues to present the hazardous driving situations it always has had. As a town, we should acknowledge this remains a huge concern, and that Rowley, as Rowley continues to grow, especially at the west end of Weathersfield St., the traffic situation here will only grow worse. It was shared at the Planning Board hearing that a car count was made on Saturday morning, April 6th. Within twenty minutes, two hundred seventy-nine cars had passed through, and eighty-seven cars made unprotected or left turns. One board member's response was that the Massachusetts Department of Transportation would be required to do a traffic study if this article passes, but it was suggested to them that we should not have to rely on the DOT to study what we already know. This area is residential. No business has ever been put on the corner. As proposed, Article 30, thirty has fewer protections for the neighbors than what the town proposed this year for the very same spot. The town at least included a buffer to face Weathersfield St. As it turns out, the town even then pulled this 293 property and other corner properties out of Article 30. A citizen petition for a zoning change is not the right process.
You have to speak to this Article 30, not 31. Thirty one is the next one.
Alright, I will continue. Alright, well then I will leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Todd Hasselback, 266 Weathersfield. I have a question on numbers. It seems this change is driven by the desire for more tax revenue, which we'd all like to see. We'd all like to see additional tax revenue in the town. My question either to the Planning Board or the Finance Board is, have we done an analysis of the incremental new revenue that would come in as a result of this change, and offset that with any drops in assessed value or property values of the forty or forty-five residential properties abutting this? If, if there is such an analysis, I'd like you to share it.
Alright, so there seems to be quite a bit of opposition to this, and I want to try to address some of it. Firstly, someone brought up the issue of, of tax... Firstly, someone brought up the issue of tax...
I'm sorry.
Could be tall. So the question deals with how much tax revenue we can raise from this type of initiative. And someone just proposed we consider an analysis. Well, it'd be very difficult to do that, because we have no idea what type of developers might come forward to propose developing on this land. So we really don't have any way to gauge what kind of revenue we could anticipate from this type of a proposal. However, what we are doing is trying to encourage some economic activity here in Rowley. And to that end, what we're doing is creating an area where businesses could locate themselves. And with that would come amenities for the town that would potentially provide, you know, benefits that the town may not even be considering at this point. We're talking about potentially places where you might seek employment, places where you might... We could add restaurants in this location, doctors' offices, this type of use. So there are things that potentially could be attractive for the town. Additionally, we have these five businesses that are out there that are really underutilized. They exist as they are as pre-existing non-conforming structures that were there before the zoning ordinance took effect. So by putting these districts... Pardon, putting this overlay district into place, if there's any intention to change the use, they'd have options to develop commercially that would then be subject to the purview of the town. So instead of having what we do have out there, which, you know, does seem a little bit unplanned, we potentially could see growth occur in a way that is a little more consistent with what good planning would dictate. Also, I heard some comments that this was the product of a chaotic system of reviewing this. I would really... I beg to differ with that. There's a zoning review committee that looked at this over several meetings. We've had an open meeting at the library where we addressed many of the concerns that these people brought forward. We did deal very in-depth with the abutters, and in fact, we accommodated many of the abutters to this project. The Fox Meadow Condominium Association came forward, and as a result, we moved any development that could affect them. They're down here at 545 Newbury Fort Turnpike. We've moved all the development up... Pardon me, the zoning district up to the highway, so only the portion directly adjacent to the highway could be developed in that kind of a fashion. So we did take this into consideration. We have been through a long process for this. After the informational meeting we held, we held a public meeting at the Planning Board, and after two or three sessions at that meeting, we did take a vote, and I believe it was unanimous that we support this initiative. Actually, could we just be consistent about what zoning ordinance we're talking about? This is the petition by the Board of... Pardon me, by the Planning Board, not by... Not on the corner of Weathersfield. So there was a unanimous decision to support this. As for why we would consider the lots to the south of Weathersfield, the lots to the south of those lots are already in the business light industrial district. So what we're trying to do is create continuity of a district from where it already exists further north. What we're trying to avoid is skipping over lots. And again, just because these lots would now be zoned business light industrial doesn't change who owns these properties and what those owners choose to do with it. So as long as those owners continue to want to use the property for residential purposes, that's absolutely their prerogative, and nothing about this would change that. And there was also a concern about whether this would be an outlet for more retail marijuana establishments. And in fact, we're not creating a new retail district. We're looking for a business light industrial district, so that it is possible that a cultivator or a manufacturer could locate their business in this district. That's the case for all the business light industrial district presently. However, the retail district, which is closer to the 133 intersection, is the only district that allows for marijuana sales.
I think we've... Brief, Bernie.
So I would just make a couple of points. First of all, my mention of chaotic is the outcome, not the process. I actually thought the process was well-conducted and that the Planning Board were very open and willing to listen to people up to a point. With regards to the possibility of businesses going into this area, that just doesn't make any sense. I mean, look at Simard's. Look at how long Simard's has been there. Who's going to take that land? If you look at the other plots that are under... Would be under consideration, again, it's a tiny business that would go in there. So we're not looking at massive employment. We're not looking at massive income. And it's... And so therefore, I just think this whole plan was ill-considered and poorly executed. Ultimately, the outcome, not the process. And I do believe that the Planning Board has to put up with a lot, including people like me, and I appreciate that. But again, that doesn't change the issue about whether it's a good decision or not good decision, and this is not a good decision. Thank you very much. Please vote no.
I just want to address one point from the rebuttal, and that he specified specifically as an example, Simard's. Keep in mind, Simard's exists as a pre-existing non-conforming use. So the only option for that site is a lunchstand, as we currently have. If they wanted to sell that property, the new owner could run a lunchstand, or they can convert that property to residential use. But they wouldn't have the options that this would provide. Now, all we're suggesting is that by creating a zoning scheme where a business could locate onto some of these sites that are already developed as non-conforming, we could create some order. And absent that, we'll continue to have the mishmash that we have.
The counters, please come forward. It's the same process. They're going to pass out the ballots. You're going to either vote yes or no on Article 30. What was that? You want me... If you want me to call for it, remember it's a two-thirds vote. Okay. Alright, then hold off for one second. All those in favor of Article 30 signify by saying aye. Any opposed? What the heck was that? Let's do that again, okay? We need the paper ballot, and we're doing it. And once everybody has had a paper ballot and voted, we will move on to Article 31, and there is some different procedures with Article 31. While the ballots are being passed out, I would like to let you know that Representative Brad Hill is here. And he says he's not talking. Wow, these are bright.
No, they're going on Sanders Lane.
We used to have warehouses on Warehouse Lane.
Yep.
Down at the end of the river.
Sharon Lee Memphis.
No, actually, a lot of the stuff in the marina, some of the buildings were from the warehouses. Oh, they're still fighting.
Sure is. Welcome to the world of politics.
Okay, my question is, does everybody here have a ballot? Okay. Are you ready? Okay, well, we'll start this time with this side, fairness.
For the small pieces of land that you have there, they're not going to have... It's not going to be acceptable, though, with this set way back, like this was last. They don't have... Look at them now, because you've got the Mill River. You've got the Mill River that... Look at where the top there.
Oh, geez!
But you can have them to say... Are you the...
Wait, how are you? How's the family doing? The kids are doing good? We're all getting too old for this. Thank you.
I went to the dedication, Route 1, and I spoke to the director personally. And I asked, and I was said, told, yes. He's gone now. We get a new director. I asked, because I made it a point... I had seen his picture, and I saw him down to the tent, and they had the open house, and I went right up to him. And then several people from Rowley, because it was even on the Rowley talk, some people said the same thing, that somebody went from... A family from Rowley went, and they were denied. They were told that it was only the Salem residents. So it's terrible. And you also know that we lost to that building. It was kind of... They had a meeting with the town of Rowley. We lost $90,000 every year to tax... That's a big chunk of money for one building. They contribute... They instantly went when they wanted. They did stick with it.
They voted for them two years before they could move on.
It's not right. And they got several hundred million dollars in their last fund draw. They're floating a little... But we have no say in this. There was... The complex was up to sale for a while. That was showing a joy. And it was on the market. Anybody could have bought it. And then people who saw it was available, and they bought it. You can't prevent them from buying it. It's the town government that's saying, like, we can buy a piece of property that's on the market. It was available to anybody. Unfortunately, it was a... You know, what if it was a hospital that we wanted to convert them?
Good. Who knows what a next color is?
Yep, yep. I was. I really was.
It's on the tour? What about the building? Oh, is it? What, Third Mary?
Okay, we'll start with the other side, and if it moves along pretty good, I've been told I can give you the Bruins score.
No, I understand, and I respect you. I mean, you don't want to... No, I mean, I understand. My father was like that. Hey, we could use the restaurants, right?
Yeah. Alright, has everybody voted now? Okay. Alright, counters? Has everybody, please? Could we please have your attention? We're almost done with the special. We've got one more article, and then we're moving on to the regular town meeting, and I'm hoping to be finished by 11 o'clock. My goal has always been for one night. Alright, I have the results of Article 29. Yes, 134; no, 59. The total is 193 votes, and it passes. Now, Article 31. I have never done one of these, and I cannot remember how long ago it was that there's been one in the town of Rowley. It is a citizens' petition. It's been brought forth by a landowner, but not a resident of the town. And the rules are, and Town Council is here, and I told them to stop me if I say it wrong. The motion and the second has to be made by a registered voter in the town. With that being said, Article 31 is in order. Is there anybody here regarding Article 31 of the special town meeting that is going to make the motion and second it?
She has to come forward. We have to make sure. Are you seconding him? We need you here.
My name is Frank Lotito. I live at 293 Weathersfield Street. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning district map to rezone the property known and numbered as 293 Weathersfield Street, which is located at the intersection of Route 1 and Weathersfield Street. Map 23, Lot 47, from the outlying zoning district... Map 23, lot 47, from the outlying zoning district OD to the Business Light Industry District, BLI.
I second this, and I'm Deb DeAngelis from Seven Newbury Road.
Very much, yes. Yes, I would, thank you very much. Okay. It has been moved and seconded by registered voters in the town. Now, in order for somebody to speak on this, even though the landowner is a taxpayer in this town, it is the vote of the body here to allow a representative of Article 31, who is not a resident of the town, to speak on this. So it is a simple majority, so the question is, to allow a representative of Article 31 to speak on it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Okay, I've been asked that we do this again. On Article 31, all those in favor of a representative for the landowner to speak on this article, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
In fairness, we're gonna do a hand count. All right, all those in favor of somebody regarding Article 31, speak and... Oh, God, you know what I need, my calendar? So, we're almost, okay, one minute, they're almost done. Who says they have a question? Come forward. No, I'm sorry, those are the rules.
Okay, I am obeying the rules by coming up here to speak for myself.
Speak in here.
I'm coming up here myself to speak for myself. Why can't the landowner speak for him or herself, rather than giving a representative? Unless they are under eighteen.
Why?
He has a lawyer.
Okay, all right, that's what I was wondering.
Okay, the counters are finishing up with Article 30, so under Article 31, they're gonna go on each side. Sue, are they ready? Are they ready? The counters on this side will count the finance committee, the counters on this side will count the wall and the stage. Okay? Okay, are we ready? Okay, you got, you understand, those on this side will do the finance committee, and the rest will do the stage. And you've got a match. Okay? Are you girls ready?
What is this?
Okay. All those in favor of a representative to Article 31 to speak, signify by putting your hand up and keeping it up until they go to the back of the room. All set? Okay, hands down, those not in favor of a representative under Article 31 to speak, please raise your hands, and keep them up till they're counted. Okay, the results of Article 30, yes, fifty-six, no, one hundred and fifty-six, for two hundred and twelve votes, the article fails. Okay. The results of Article 31, allowing some, a representative to speak. Sixty-five, yes, one hundred and five, no. So for somebody to speak, that will not happen. There is still one more step, every article has to be voted on. So Article 31, even if there is no discussion, still has to be voted on. Does anybody want to say something, either way, regarding Article 31, or we will take the vote on it? Yes? Yes, you can.
My name is Greg Hills, and I live on 475 Newbury Court Turnpike. It's this piece of property just south of Weathersfield Street, and I'd like to encourage you to vote no on Article 31, for a couple of different reasons. If you notice on your page sixteen, the planning board recommendation was a three-to-two vote. It was, in fact, if you were at the meeting, it was two-to-two, and then the chairman had to be the tiebreaker. It was a hard vote for the planning board to make this decision. So what is it that's gonna tip the scales for us? First of all, it's the character and nature, that was what was described at the meeting. What is the character and nature of this piece of property? Is it more residential, or is it more commercial? If you look at the footage just on Weathersfield, which is a residential neighborhood, the footage itself is greater, it's about four hundred feet than that which is on Route 1, just by simple math, I believe the character and nature of this piece of property is more residential. You notice also the ones who are in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-six to twenty-nine, will be facing that piece of property, whatever goes up there, and I believe it should stay on the residential side. The second reason why, so the first is character and nature, the second reason why is community. We are a community on Weathersfield Street. Our residences, we straddle Route 1, which would seem awkward, but we're a tight community. We have Christmas parties together, we have summer parties together, whoever is in that piece of property will be welcomed into our community, and I think the strength of Rowley is in this community. I don't think it should be always the bottom line, in terms of profit. And one of the things to note is, our driveway comes right out into Route 1, so Route 1 is both commercial and residential, we're residential on Route 1. And my girls go to Pine Grove, they go right to the school, two girls, and the bus used to come down Route 1, by our driveway, to pick up my girls, but the trucks would barrel over the hill so fast, squealing their brakes, trying to stop, that the bus driver and we in the school decided it was too dangerous to have the bus stop there. Putting more commercial there, I think, would make it even more dangerous than already dangerous intersection. And, and so I would encourage you to vote no, the character and nature of the piece of property, and for the sake of the community. Thank you.
I want to reinforce that last statement. I'm David Jakowitz, vice chair, vice chair of the planning board, and when I drive Weathersfield Street, it is a residential street. The character of that property right now has a beautiful, I would guess eighteen forties house, some people say it's earlier, and a beautiful barn. And you should not have to come, thank you. I'm gonna eat the mic. And for that reason, I voted no. That portion of Weathersfield Street should stay residential. And that's why I voted no. Thank you.
Okay, this is gonna be really quick, but it's a procedural issue, and the point that I want to make clear, and I hope the town clerk is, is listening, on the explanation for this, this petition, it basically says the parcel is presently vacant land. Well, the person who proposed this article is a resident of 293 Weathersfield Street, and therefore, by logic, it's not vacant, it's in fact a residence. And it is, it's a misdirection, and to include in the explanation, which is what people signed, which got us to this point, and that shouldn't be accepted or tolerated. Thank you.
See, no other questions? The article has got to be, it's still, it's because it is a zoning change, so all those in favor of Article 31 signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
No.
Article 31 fails. Okay, that concludes the special town meeting. We now, we now have the regular town meeting, and my goal is eleven o'clock, and there's not as much controversy in that, we should be out of here within about another hour, hour and a half. Right now, we need a motion to adjourn the special town meeting.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to adjourn the May 6, 2019 special town meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of, motion to adjourn the special town meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Ready to start reading? Yes. Yes. Okay. Town of Rowley, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, warrant for annual town meeting, May 6, 2019. To the constables in the town of Rowley and the county of Essex, greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth... Yes?
I move to suspend further reading of the May 6, 2019 annual town meeting warrant, because present town meeting members have a copy of this warrant.
Second.
First of all, does everybody have a copy of the regular town meeting warrant? Okay. Motion has been made to suspend the reading of the annual town meeting warrant, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Article two.
Article two. Madam Moderator, I move the town to vote to suspend, in the town meeting, the application of Section 19 and Section 20 of the town meeting bylaw pertaining to the reconsideration of all money articles. Such suspension intended for the specific purpose to balance the total level of funds raised and appropriated within the limitations of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 and a half, so-called, and give blanket warning hereby that any money articles may, at the end of the meeting, and after all articles have been acted upon, be moved for reconsideration in order to balance the total level of funds raised and appropriated within the limitations of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 59, Section 21(c). Second.
Okay, Article two's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's. Very quickly...
Board of Cemetery Commissioners, Chairperson, five hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Are there any questions regarding this article? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article three passes. Article four is in order.
Article four. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate nineteen million, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and transfer and appropriate the sum of seven hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars from free cash and transfer and appropriate the sum of hundred and fifty thousand dollars from overlay resever for a total of twenty million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars to defray the expense of the town for the forthcoming fiscal year, including bonds, notes and interests. I need a second.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Does anybody have any questions regarding any of these line items from page two to page, to the bottom of page seven in your special, in your regular town meeting warrant? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article four passes. Article five is in order.
Article four. I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of two million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-five cents from the Water Department Enterprise Fund for FY 2020 for the following. Should I read those?
Just, I would say to do the bold ones. If there's any questions, somebody can, if there's any questions on this, put a hold on one of the lines. So he would like say wages and salaries.
Wages and salaries, expenses, other, debt, ask me contract for a total of two million, one forty-eight, seven eighty-five, thirty cents.
And this is the, and this is the page that was reprinted?
I believe so.
Okay, is there a second on this?
Can we sign it already? Yes, okay.
Finance Committee recommendation? Finance Committee recommends this article.
Hey, John? Go ahead. Do you have any explaining or whatever?
It's our standard budget. I just wanted to do the document. Any questions on that? It's our standard operating and it's also less than last year's, unless you've noticed.
Yes. Come forward, please, and state your name and address. And speak right into the mic.
Walter Barkus, 50 Pleasant Street, Rowley. I have one question. It's that water supervisor, an increase of sixty thousand dollars, or am I missing something?
We did raise it. Okay, the actual, so, just hang over a second, tell people. So there is significantly more because we didn't have a supervisor for a significant portion of the year. So the actual is just what we spent and the money is just sitting there. So we only spent thirty thousand actually, but for the next year's budget, we did, we raised it because we've been searching for someone for a year and the market rates are higher and we worked with the town, not the planning board, the personnel board and the selectmen to increase it to someplace that we can hopefully hire someone.
Wish I did a, wish I did a job like that, get a two-hundred percent raise.
It's not a two-hundred percent raise.
No, it isn't.
No, because that's, we only spent thirty thousand. The person was only here for three months. They weren't here for the other nine months of the year. So we only actually spent thirty grand.
Doesn't say that.
Well, that's why FY actual, I'm sorry, actual and then budgeted for nineteen, that's, that's what we're going to, that's what we're asking for for the next, that's what we asked for. But we only spent in FY eighteen, thirty thousand. If you look nineteen to twenty, it went up, I think, three thousand, ninety-two to ninety-five. But from eighteen to nineteen, we had a big absence where we didn't, we didn't have a supervisor, so we didn't spend it. That's why it looks so weird.
Is it necessary? I mean, did we get through last year?
By the skin of our teeth and the help of the commissioners, we're actually doing a lot of extra work on the side and the employees stepped up and really worked their tails off, frankly. And my concern is if we don't get a supervisor, we're going to be in a worse shape. They're really working hard to fill that gap, as well as Mark, who has some water licenses, who's the chairman. Bernie has a lot of expertise in finance. So we worked with them doing the budget and we helped out as a whole team.
I'm sorry, I'm not that good with finances, but sixty thousand dollars is quite a bit of money.
And I will say that it was not spent because there was no one to pay it to in its actuals versus budget.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, they haven't, didn't spend it last year, but for this year now, sixty thousand is an awful lot more to spend. It seems to me it's a tremendous amount of money, even though you've got to go out and get somebody for that.
Madam Moderator?
I'm a Yankee.
Madam Moderator?
Yes?
Very, very briefly, in other words, halfway through the year in 2018, the superintendent left the position, which meant the money wasn't spent. FY nineteen, we appropriated ninety-two thousand, eighty-one dollars and sixty cents. There is no superintendent in place at the moment, so that money's not being spent. But they're hoping to hire a new superintendent for FY twenty and they, so the salary is ninety-five thousand, two forty-six point four seven. So it's a matter of, you can't run these departments year after year without a water superintendent. So we've been skidding by because the board has done the job and the employees have been stepping up and doing more than what they're required to do, the hour of the employee. So this is just, there's no big raise here. There's no, it's money not spent because the position was vacant. That's why there's a big discrepancy in the thirty thousand to the ninety thousand.
Any other questions? Okay, all right, seeing none? All those in favor of?
No.
Go on.
Libby Tucker, 186 Central Street. I just asked what the salary was last for, for the year. We only know that she was only paid thirty grand and for next, for the next water superintendent, we want to pay them ninety grand. He's telling me that last, the salary she was at was eighty thousand. So it's not going, it's going up twelve to try to get somebody in the position. That's all.
Sue.
Sue Bailey, the town accountant. For fiscal eighteen, the budget was eighty-four thousand, two forty-two, but as she left, we only spent thirty thousand that year.
Okay. Any other questions on this article? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article five passes. Article six is in order.
Thank you. Article six, I move the town vote to transfer from the Water Department Enterprise Fund to the General Fund, the sum of sixty-seven thousand, four fourteen and sixty-five cents for the listed items in Article six on page nine of the May ninth, 2019 annual town meeting warrant, and that any other money spent by the general government on behalf of the Water Department be reimbursed to the General Fund from the Water Department Enterprise Fund in fiscal year 2020.
Okay, it's been moved in second. The Finance Committee? Finance Committee recommends this article. John?
Any questions on this? It's really bookkeeping. Forrest.
Are there any questions on Article six? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article six passes. Article seven is in order.
Thank you. I move the town vote to transfer the sum of six hundred and four thousand, four fifty-four from the Water Department Enterprise Free Cash to the Water Department Stabilization Fund.
Finance Committee recommendation? Finance Committee recommends this article.
This is an annual article and it depends on what we have for free cash. We have to move it to the stabilization fund. And once it's done, then we have to get town meeting approval to pull that money out and spend it on broken mains, broken street, whatever it is. But it's the money that was left. Again, it's put in under the purview of the town, so we can't just decide to spend it. That's what putting it in the stabilization fund, fund does.
All right. Any questions on Article seven? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article seven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article seven passes. Article eight is in order.
Thank you. I move the town vote to transfer from the Funds Appropriate Under Article Fifteen Sanitary Survey of the November fourteenth, 2016 Special Town Meeting, the sum of twenty-seven thousand dollars to purchase and install an exhaust ventilation system for the garage at 401 Central Street.
Finance Committee's recommendation? Finance Committee recommends this article. John?
Any questions on this? It's really bookkeeping. Forrest.
Are there any questions on Article seven? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article seven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article seven passes. Article eight is in order.
Thank you. I move the town vote to transfer the sum of six hundred and four thousand, four fifty-four from the Water Department Enterprise Free Cash to the Water Department Stabilization Fund.
Finance Committee recommendation? Finance Committee recommends this article.
This is an annual article and it depends on what we have for free cash. We have to move it to the stabilization fund. And once it's done, then we have to get town meeting approval to pull that money out and spend it on broken mains, broken street, whatever it is. But it's the money that was left. Again, it's put in under the purview of the town, so we can't just decide to spend it. That's what putting it in the stabilization fund, fund does.
All right. Any questions on Article seven? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article seven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article seven passes. Article eight is in order.
Thank you. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the funds appropriated under Article fifteen Sanitary Survey of the November fourteenth, 2016 Special Town Meeting, the sum of twenty-seven thousand dollars to purchase and install an exhaust ventilation system for the garage at 401 Central Street.
Finance Committee's recommendation? Finance Committee recommends this article.
You may have heard earlier that Massachusetts is now an OSHA state and this brings us into compliance. The garage at 401 Central Street has no exhaust and they need to be in there and this will bring us into compliance.
Any questions on Article eight? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article eight passes. Article nine is in order.
Thank you. I move the town vote to appropriate by transfer from the funds appropriated under Article fifteen Sanitary Survey of the November fourteenth, 2016 Special Town Meeting, the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to purchase a replacement mobile compressor.
Finance Committee recommendation? Finance Committee recommends this article.
Our compressor, our compressor's twenty-eight years old and it's dangerous. It's, it's well past, it's appreciated a life and we, we just think it should be replaced. Safety of the organs.
Are there any questions regarding Article nine? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article nine signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article nine passes. Article ten is in order.
Thank you. I move the town vote to appropriate by transfer from the funds appropriated under Article fifteen Sanitary Survey of the November fourteenth, 2016 Special Town Meeting, the sum of thirty thousand dollars to review and update earlier work done by the Water Department to identify additional sources of town drinking water.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
So why we're looking for money to do this is proper planning. The town's growing. I moved in town thirty years ago, there's twenty-five hundred residents, is now well over six, maybe not officially. But I was on an economic development committee in twenty years ago with some people and the build-out for Rowley of buildable lots and whatnot is about eleven thousand. And we have a DEP, we have all our ducks lined up. However, if we don't look now for five to eight years down the road, it'll be a crisis. So this is just proper planning. There's engineering fees. We're looking at places that were walked away from in the past. We're just getting it started.
Okay. Any questions regarding Article ten? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article ten signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article ten passes. Article eleven is in order.
Thank you. I move the town vote to appropriate by transfer from the funds appropriated under Article fifteen Sanitary Survey of the November fourteenth, 2016 Special Town Meeting, the sum of three thousand dollars to supplement the funds appropriated under Article nine, PALL filtration system of the May two, 2016 Annual Town Meeting, to purchase replacement PALL filters at the water treatment plant.
Finance Committee recommendation? Finance Committee recommends this article.
This is for operations. Originally, we were going to buy a lot of water filters and stick them on the shelf and we were informed or we came to the conclusion that probably wasn't the best way. So annually, we put just enough money aside to buy what we need. And the prices have actually fallen, so it's worked out to our advantage.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding this article? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article eleven passes. Article twelve is in order.
Thank you. I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate thirty thousand dollars from the Water Department Stabilization Fund to purchase a tract utility task vehicle.
Finance Committee recommendation? Finance Committee recommends this article.
So that's a multiple. Basically, think of like a four-wheel drive or, I don't know what they call it, gator with tracks. If you've ever looked at Prospect Hill, we can't get up it with any of the vehicles we have. We had the road redone a few years ago. We have to inspect the tank monthly and to take any equipment up there is a major undertaking. People are hiking up the hill carrying equipment. All of the town's communications equipment is up there. To service it is difficult, understated. So by doing this, this vehicle will be able to get up there. It will be able to carry cargo, testing equipment, repair equipment, telecommunications, and we're going to share it with the public safety, police and fire. Their equipment's all up there as well. So it's, we're, we're going to get it, we're going to place a store, but we're going to share it with the entire town.
Okay. Any questions on this article? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article twelve passes.
Thank you.
Now Article thirteen through fifteen is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the following accounts and their uses as printed in Articles thirteen through fifteen on page eleven.
Get closer to the mic, please.
Can't hear me?
Nope. I can't hear you.
That's good. I move the town vote to authorize the following accounts and their uses as printed in Articles thirteen through fifteen on page eleven in the May sixth, 2019 Annual Town Meeting warrant. Article thirteen is the Municipal Light Board, Municipal Light Plan Annual Appropriation. Article fourteen, the Harbor Master Municipal Waterways Maintenance and Improvement Fund. And Article fifteen, Board of Assessors Recertification Fund.
Second.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends Articles thirteen through fifteen.
These are just standard articles we vote every year to appropriate money for those particular boards. Thank you.
Okay, any questions on these articles? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, so Article thirteen through fifteen has passed. Article sixteen is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote pursuant, pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three, E one-two, to authorize the following expenditures caps for fiscal, fiscal year 2020. Council on Aging, five thousand... Council on Aging, five thousand dollars. Board of Health, twenty thousand dollars. Parks Recreation Committee and Board of Selectment Facilities, thirty thousand dollars. Board of Selectmen, Home Composting Bins, two thousand dollars. Highway Department, twelve thousand dollars. Shellfish Department, six thousand dollars. Zoning Board of Appeals and Board of Appeals, four thousand dollars. Board of Cemetery Commissioners, twenty thousand dollars. Library, two thousand five hundred dollars. Agricultural Commission, five thousand dollars. Harbor Master, thirty thousand dollars. Board of Selectmen and Park Recreation Community Events, twenty thousand dollars. Records Access, five thousand dollars.
Second.
Finance Committee's recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends Article sixteen.
Are there any questions regarding this article? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article sixteen carries. Article seventeen is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate from the PEG, P.E.G., Public Education Government Access and Cable Related Fund, the sum of seventy-one thousand five hundred dollars for wages and thirty-one thousand for expenses to support the cable television, P.E.G. access services and programming, and to prepare for the renewal of the cable franchise licenses, including any associated expert and legal services.
Second.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends Article seventeen.
Do you want to say anything, Joe? Okay. Okay. Are there any questions regarding Article seventeen? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article seventeen passes. Article eighteen is in order.
Susan L. Will, Board of Health.
Louder.
Madam Moderator.
Right, Sue. Pull it down so that it's...
Pull it down? Yeah. Okay. I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of sixty-three thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust Septic Betterment Loan Program to pay the debt service on the town's loan from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends Article eighteen.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions regarding this article? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article eighteen passes. Article nineteen is in order.
I move the town to, the town vote to adjust the exemption amount for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under General Law's Chapter fifty-nine, Section Five, Clause forty-one C, in accordance with Section fifty-one of Chapter one eighty-four of the Acts of two thousand and two, from seven hundred and fifty dollars to one thousand dollars to begin effective fiscal year two thousand twenty.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends Article nineteen.
Are there any questions regarding this article? Okay. All those in favor of Article nineteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article nineteen passes. Article twenty is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to fund and implement the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the town and AFSCME Local two nine oh five, effective July one, two thousand nineteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and to transfer and appropriate for such purposes the sum of thirteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars from line fourteen collective bargaining reserve of the FY twenty budget previously approved under Article four of this annual town meeting, which is to be added to the following FY twenty budget lines. Assistant Accountant Wages, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Assessors Administrative Assistant Wages, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Assistant Collector Wages, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Conservation Secretary Wages, a hundred and eighty-five dollars. Zoning Board of Appeals Administrative Assistant Wages, two hundred and eight dollars. Town Hall Annex Janitor Wages, three hundred and forty-six dollars. Inspection Department Wages, two hundred and forty-six dollars. Police Department Wages, five thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Highway Department Wages, four thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars. Cemetery Wages, five hundred and fourteen dollars. Council on Aging Wages, one thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars. And further, to transfer and appropriate the sum of thirteen thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars from line twenty-five AFSCME contract of the FY Water Budget previously approved under Article five of this annual town meeting, which is to be added to the following FY twenty Water Budget Lines. Water Department Wages, eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Overtime Standby, one thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends Article twenty.
This article would pay for the cost increases resulting from the labor contract, which, collective bargaining contract, which the town recently negotiated with AFSCME. That would be, that contract would be in effect for a three-year period, FY twenty to FY twenty-two.
Are there any questions regarding this Article twenty? All those in favor of Article twenty signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article twenty passes. Article twenty-one is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to fund and implement the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the town and Teemsers Local one seventy Fire Union, effective July one, two thousand nineteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, and to transfer and appropriate for such purposes the sum of seven thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars from line fourteen collective bargaining reserve of the FY twenty budget previously approved under Article four of this annual town meeting, to be added to the following FY twenty budget lines. Firefighter Wages, seven thousand and thirty-eight dollars. Expenses, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-one.
Similar to the last article, this article would fund the increases resulting from a different collective bargaining agreement that was negotiated between the town and the fire department.
Are there any questions regarding Article twenty-one? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article twenty-one passes. Article twenty-two is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate our reserve from the Community Preservation Fund fiscal year two thousand twenty annual revenues, the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, debt service, community preservation projects, and other expenses, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Summary of the recommendations by category. Reserves. Creation in support of affordable housing, twenty-five thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Creation in support of historical preservation, three thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. Appropriations. Debt service for the Bradstreet Farm Land Acquisition, one hundred ninety-nine thousand thirty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. Debt service for Dodge Reservation Property, one hundred twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. Administration, five percent, twenty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-two.
These are the way that funds from the Community Preservation are broken down and put into the different categories every year.
Are there any questions regarding Article twenty-two? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article twenty-two passes. Article twenty-three is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to have its elected treasurer-collector become an appointed treasurer-collector of the town.
Second.
There's no recommendation for the Finance Committee. Is anybody going to speak to this?
Well, I'd like to explain it.
Okay, yes, that's what I mean.
Thank you. This article would make the position of treasurer-collector in the town an appointed one, rather than an elected one, which is what exists now. We're proposing to make this change because basically we think electing your treasurer-collector is not a good way to choose that person. Currently, the only qualification for running for the position is that you be a registered voter, no other qualifications such as backgrounds in municipal finance or anything of that nature. So this article would give the Board of Selectmen the ability to cast a wide net and choose the most qualified person for the job, just like the Board does in the case of the police chief, the fire chief, or other appointed officials. The treasurer-collector is an important and difficult position in the town. He or she is responsible for managing the town's cash through investments and disbursements of town funds for issuing debt. Other responsibilities include collecting property taxes, excise taxes, and fees. In order to make this change, we would not only need a favorable vote on this article, but the change would have to be approved at the election, at the next election, as a ballot question. If this article, if the change is made, the incumbent that's in this position currently, Karen Summitt, would serve out the remainder of her term, and the Board would appoint the successor treasurer-collector after that for a term not to exceed three years.
Are there any questions regarding this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This article carries, and it is on the ballot for next Tuesday. It is question one for those that will go out to vote. Article twenty-four is in order.
Philip McGowan, thirty-nine Glen Street. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote in support of Article twenty-five at this May sixth annual town meeting. The four-hundredth anniversary of the Pilgrim Landing is coming up in two thousand twenty and will be celebrated. The state will be spending a lot of money on it. This is a tremendous opportunity to create this commission for review of the Massachusetts motto and its flag.
Okay. You've jumped ahead one question. We just finished Article twenty-three, so this is Article twenty-four.
That's the agricultural.
Twenty-five is your article.
A thousand pardons.
I just, I do not like taking anything out of order than your set of precedents. I'm just, sorry, that's me.
Sure. There you go. There you go, Libby.
Libby Tucker from the Agricultural Commission. I move the town to vote to amend the vote under Article twenty-eighth of the November fifteen, two thousand four special town meeting establishing the Agricultural Commission by reducing the number of members from seven members to five members, and by providing that the maximum number of alternates be two.
Second.
Okay. There's no Finance Committee recommendation on this. Do you want to speak?
Does anybody have any questions? We have, you know, twelve meetings a year. We should be able to make all twelve, but sometimes we can't with having a quorum of four. Most boards only have a quorum of three, so that's what we're moving to. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding this? It's a reduction in the number of people on this one committee in the town. As we know, we're having trouble getting people to serve on things, so... All those in favor of this article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now it's your turn.
Philip McGowan, thirty-nine Glen Street. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote in support of Article twenty-five at this May sixth annual town meeting. The four-hundredth anniversary of the Pilgrim Landing is coming up in two thousand twenty, and it will be celebrated. State money will be spent. This is a tremendous opportunity to create this commission for review of the state motto and state flag. I hope you've had a chance to read the article, and this commission will have timelines...
Before you, I need a second before you start.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. No Finance Committee recommendation now. You can give your...
Are there any questions?
I need your article. Now you can talk. Yep, Bernie, you know the rules.
Hi, Mo Levaser, Leslie Road. What is this?
This is a House and Senate bill that's in our state legislature. It has been in committee again and again for like thirty years that the Massachusetts state flag and the Massachusetts motto will be reviewed by a commission of artist legislatures, and they'll take a look at the symbols so that they may represent a more favorable view of our indigenous, our native people.
As part of this, are people in every community bringing this up at their annual town meetings?
Yes. Over twenty communities have already stood behind this as there's been, there's got to be thirty or forty representatives and state senators also as co-signers of this bill.
And how long have you been following this?
A few months.
But it's been around for thirty years?
I've only been aware that it's been in, it's never made it out of a House committee. So it's been something that has been an issue for quite a while. It's not the first time that the flag and the seal have been changed. There's historical precedence for it, and I just think it's the right thing to do. Excuse me.
No, okay. Is there a financial commitment?
Not from the town. The state is going to allocate a lot of money to celebrate, you know, the landing of the pilgrims, and the morality of the issue outweighs financial responsibilities.
Are you looking for people from Rowley to be on this committee?
No. The committee will be appointed. It's a, they have tight tidelines, tight timelines to get the work done for the anniversary.
I guess I just don't understand. Why do you need the local support when it's a state bill?
It's an educational process, and that's how you get, you build ground support. And like I said, over twenty towns, twenty town meetings already have stood behind this.
Mo has asked all my questions, so I'm going to sit down.
Has she answered most of your questions? One of the things that I just noticed, and I'm not sure when this was presented, it says this is a two-year project, and we're talking less than a year for the four-hundredth anniversary. So has this been in the works for two years?
No, the commission has not been established yet.
Okay.
But there are guidelines.
I have a question.
Yep.
Will Massasoit be removed from the seal?
Could be.
That would be up to the commission. Probably not, but there would be a more, instead of having a sword over his head, there would be a more genial presentation.
Madam Moderator, I have a question.
Yes, go right ahead. I have some, and I can't ask.
So am I correct that you just want the town to make a general support, expression of support for this commission, not to actually have any role in establishing the commission or... or receiving recommendations?
Just general support.
Madam Moderator?
Yes. Into the mic, please.
My only objection to this is the fact that we faced questions like this in the past. You're asking 100, I don't know, 120 people here or whatever to voice support for 6,000 Rowley residents. I would prefer to see these kinds of social issues and questions put on the ballot. We have two such issues this year put on the ballot so that every citizen has a chance to say that the Rowley, Town of Rowley supports this when only, say, 150, I don't know how many for sure are here right now, but I think sets a bad precedent, and I hope we, the idea of town meeting is to set the budgets and set town policies and vote the bylaws, and I think we kind of pervert the purpose when we come in with these social-type issues that don't really represent the whole, the whole town. They only represent a small number of voters that are here at town meeting.
I respectfully disagree. This is the town seal, I mean, the Massachusetts state seal and the flag. They can be improved. We're not asking for any money. We're not asking for any time. We're just asking for a show of support that this commission be established.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, okay, come forward.
Hi, I'm Laura DePurja from...
Right into it.
From Weathersfield Street. I guess I just actually want to say thank you for bringing this up. I have been following this on the news, and I hear some people laughing and off, and I also think about this is things we approach with teaching our children. It's part of our education and rethinking things of the past, and I think the thing here is asking to bring it up, not make a change. Right now, it's asking to have the conversation, so that, to me, is what this vote is about. So, I really just want to say thank you.
Yeah, come forward, please, and name an address.
Suzapala, 254 Weathersfield Street. I think some of us are still quite confused as to what exactly our vote would accomplish. Is it merely, I know it's merely support, but what is, where does our support get translated to? Does it go to the state?
It goes to creating a commission appointed by the legislature, including native people, artists, government officials, to sit down and take a serious look at this.
So, if we vote in favor here tonight, we're telling the state that the Town of Rowley supports this, the creation of this commission?
Exactly.
And how many cities and towns does the state need in favor of this in order to form it?
They don't. This is, this is, there's two bills. There's a Senate bill and a House bill. There's House Docket 2968 and Senate Docket 1495 that... That are asking for the establishment of a commission for the purpose of investigating the features in the seal and the motto of the Commonwealth, including those which have been controversial or misunderstood or are no longer meaningful to the citizens of the Commonwealth.
That I understand what they're trying to do. I'm trying to understand what our vote does here tonight.
It helps with our representatives Hill and Tar that they should, they should be in support of this.
So, are we simply sending a message to our representatives that the Town of Rowley supports it?
Yes.
Just before we go on, I take the vote. I think one of the police officers went out, somebody hit their keys, and somebody's alarm is going off on a vehicle just outside of the windows here that I can see, so don't be surprised if he comes in with the plate number that one of yous have tricked off your alarm. All right, are there any more questions regarding this article? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I'm sorry. The note, the article fails. Article 26 is in order. And this, I will, just for clarification, this is another citizen's petition. It is being moved and seconded by two residents, and then we move forward on this.
I'm Judy Hanson.
Judy, right into...
I'm Judy Hanson, and I propose...
And your address, please.
24 Heritage Way in here in Rowley.
Closer, please. Thank you.
Closer, I hate, yeah, sorry.
To see if the town will vote to rezone a portion of the property off Kathleen Circle, Rowley assesses map 7, Lot 17. It's shown as proposed Lot 2, consisting of 9.7 plus or minus acres on Exhibit A attached here too, from out... Oh, that's the one.
That's the one.
That's the one. Oh, thank you, I've never done this.
That's okay, it's a learning process.
Okay. I move that the town meeting approve Article 26 to rezone a portion of the property off Kathleen Circle, Rowley assesses map 7, Lot 17, shown as a proposed Lot 2, consisting of 9.7 plus or minus acres on Exhibit A attached on the town meeting warrant, from the Outlying District to Business Light Industrial District. The remainder of the property, shown as proposed Lot 1, consisting of 23.9 plus or minus acres on Exhibit A, shall remain in the Outlying District to be conveyed to the Town of Rowley Conservation Commission for open space purposes. Oh, I've got it all signed for you.
Okay, and it's in second? Okay, it's been moved in second, and there's no Finance Committee recommendation. This is the last of the citizen's petition, so are you going to speak on behalf of it?
Principal in the property, Mr. Coughlin, is here.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
A principal in the property, Mr. Coughlin, is here, and we'd be glad to answer any and all your questions.
Now, this is exactly the same as we had before. Mr. Coughlin, is he here?
Yes, he is.
Okay, and he is not a resident of the town, but he owns the property in the town, and he would like to address this article. So, it is on behalf of you that have to say yes or no. All those in favor of Mr. Coughlin coming forward and presenting this article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Coughlin, you can come forward, and we'll put, do you need the screen down for your map? Okay, fine. Okay, folks, this is the last one for the screen to come down. We're almost at the end, and we're moving along very well. I don't know if I'm going to do this or not, Nene, that you saw it was passed a piece of paper. The Bruins game is over, and I know the score, but I also know people are taping this, so maybe we need to take a vote. Do you want to hear what the score was or not? No? Okay, that's fine. Some of us know and some don't.
Sorry.
Good evening. My name is John Coughlin, one of the principals...
Speak into the mic.
Oh, excuse me. Good evening. My name is John Coughlin, one of the principals with Gateway Realty Trust.
You got to speak right into the mic.
Don't look at your map. You know where the land is. They're looking at it, speaking to this.
Start over. My name is John Coughlin, one of the principals with Gateway Realty Trust, which owns this piece of property. This property is located at the end of Forest Ridge Drive. It consists of approximately 36 acres of land. The proposal is to retain and adjoining up to our present Forest Ridge the lower nine, not 10 acres, donate the balance of the land, plus or minus 26 acres, to the Rowley Conservation Commission for their use and whatever they wish to do with it. I think a key thing is, anything that happens there will come in off of Forest Ridge Drive, which comes off of Route 1, and there will be nothing coming off the Kathleen Circle area. In addition to this, this would give a permanent buffer zone for the Kathleen Circle people that are already up there for any development that would ever happen there. And that's in essence what we're proposing. I'll answer, I'll answer any questions if anybody has anything, and we'll move it along.
Before we have any questions, the Planning Board would like to present its vote.
After an open meeting on this matter, the Planning Board reviewed the issue and... Sure. The Planning Board did consider this issue at an open meeting, and after deliberating, we unanimously voted to support this zoning amendment. It allows the developer to, it changes a portion of the land that's currently in the Outlying District to Business Light Industrial, but it also provides a tremendous benefit to the town by providing, if I'm not mistaken, looks like 33.6 acres of open space that would be committed to the town. It also would permanently close off the possibility of retail, pardon me, residential development on this site that would access through Kathleen Circle, so it solves a lot of issues for the town, and it seems to have nothing but upside.
All right, are there any questions regarding this? Okay, seeing none, this is a two-thirds vote, so all those in favor of this article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have to have a count, so I had said that all the zoning changes or anything would be paper ballot, so we're going to have to do one more paper ballot, and we will move on to the rest of the articles, and hopefully, if we keep moving on, by the time we're down to Article 30 or 31, whatever is the last one here, we'll be ready to adjourn. All right? So, Sue, if your counters will come forward, please.
Except, except, I just watched two, two already. I only have three now. We got three now. So, do you want to... Yes, we need, we need somebody just to come forward for this, or to be a counter. I guess, ah, someone has said that.
I need one for Amy. Thank you.
So, what happened? Yeah.
Oh, well, my son's leaving at 4:30 in the morning to go to Disney.
Yeah.
All right, once the ballots have been passed out, please, if we can move along quite quickly, we could be out of here by 10:30. I'll take one.
Yeah, he hasn't been able to, so it's good to be able to laugh.
Does everybody have a ballot, please? No, I got one. I'm only allowed one. I'm only allowed one. Okay, everybody is ready?
Yep.
All right, this side, come forward, same routine, in the box, and your non-vote goes in the bucket, please. Thank you.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, all right, now this side of the room, please. All right, everybody, has everybody voted? While they are counting, we are going to move on to the next article. Okay, Article 27 is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town appropriate $600,000.
Joe.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Closer.
Madam Moderator? Madam Moderator?
Yes, we're here.
I move the town appropriate $600,000 to pay costs of purchasing a 1,500 gallon per minute rescue pumper truck for the fire department, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, in that to meet this appropriation, $300,000 shall be transferred from free cash in the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $300,000 under, pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote, in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Finance Committee, Finance Committee recommends this article.
Joe? Yes, we are, we have a 32-year-old pumper truck, and I think it's time to retire it, and to replace it with a pumper truck that will service for another 20, 25 years. Sorry, I didn't do that on the right mic. We have a 32-year-old pumper truck in service now, and I think it's time to retire it and to bring a new truck on that will service another 20, 25 years.
Are there any questions regarding this article? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of Article 27 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Article 27 passes. Article 28 is in order.
Madam, Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to create a capital stabilization fund pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to be used for the purpose of major capital purchases and projects.
Second.
Finance Committee, Finance Committee recommends this article.
Madam Moderator, the purpose of this article is to start to, in the past, when we bought vehicles, fire engines, for example, highway trucks, we've always had to borrow the money, which cost us a lot of, a lot of money in interest costs and borrowing costs, or we've had to go to a prop two-and-a-half override, which gets added to the taxpayers for, was generally been a five-year period. At this point, we have- At this point, we have decided that it's beneficial to the town to establish the stabilization fund, so that when we have free cash, we can put the money away, and then in four, five, six years, or whatever, whether we buy a fire truck, a highway truck, an extra police cruiser, or whatever the, whatever the capital item might be, that we can just transfer it from this fund, rather than having to borrow, or go for a prop two-and-a-half override. So hopefully, this will, in future years, we'll fund it each year and build up that fund to be used for capital purchases.
Are there any questions regarding this? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of Article 28 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 28 passes. Article 29 is in- We already did 27. Yes. This, and now, we just did 28. Yep, I know, I'm sorry, and we are on Article 29. Article 29 is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate by transfer from free cash the sum of $200,000 to the capital stabilization fund.
Second.
Finance Committee, Finance Committee recommends this article.
This article would transfer $200,000 to the fund that we just created.
Oh, that's good. Okay, are there any questions regarding Article 29? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 29 passes. Article 30 is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate by transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 to the other post-employment benefits trust fund.
Second.
Article 30, um, Finance Committee recommendation? Finance Committee recommends this article. Are there any questions regarding Article 30? Yes, come forward.
I promised to be quick. What's the plan for digging out of this huge hole that we're in?
Put some money in each year.
They, speak to it, then.
The plan is, this is, the state and the federal government have determined that we need to plan for future retirement benefits, and OPEB is the vehicle which we use. We're allowed to put in whatever we have or whatever we can afford. It's, I think it's something like, I don't know, with the article says there's like a $5 million deficit. None of us here are ever gonna raise that, so we put some money towards it each year. Eventually, the state may require us to fully fund it, so this is, we do, every year, there's a reoccurring article, we put as much as we can in to offset those benefits that are paid to the retirees, required by state law.
But this looks like it's just keating the can down the road, so at what point do we really, if the $5 million deficit is real, at what point do we really address it?
We are addressing it, unless you want to pay $5 million now in a loan, we could, we could pay it off this year, but since we don't want to do that, we pay a little bit into it each year, and we're doing the best we can to fund it, and probably the state's never gonna require it to be fully funded, but that's the goal.
Any other questions? Okay. This is Article 30. All those in favor of Article 30 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 30 passes. And before we go on, um, what article we just said? I'm sorry, this is Article 26. I have the results of Article 26. Yes, 89, no, 14. Article 26 passes. Okay, we're on to Article 31.
Madam Moderator, I move the town to vote to appropriate by transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to stabilization fund.
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation? Finance Committee recommends this article. Okay, are there any questions regarding Article 31? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article 31 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 31 passes. Article 32 is in order.
Madam Moderator, just to go back to stabilization fund for a second. This is very important, because this really shows the health of our town. Back about 10 years ago, when I first came on the board, we had about $175,000. Dave was the chairman of the board at that particular time, and we have every year put away money, and so at the end of this, this year, we will have $1,150,000 in the stabilization, and this is important for the, again, for the financial health of the town. This sends a message out there that when we need to go out and borrow money, that we, we have a high bond rating. So this is, when you look at the whole picture of the town, this, we're a well-funded town.
Okay, all righty. Article 32 is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move to meet in St. Mary's Church, rear, Route 1A in Rowley, on Tuesday, May 14, 2019, at 12 noon, to act on the items listed under Article 32 on pages 17 and 18 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Article 32 has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now I need a motion to adjourn.
I get the, I get to do the best one. I move the town vote to adjourn the May 6, 2019, annual town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, and if, if you could please, some, if the chairs are heavier than the older ones we have, there are the chair holders up back, if some of them could bring those there, and then they'll take care of them later today or in the morning.